One third of it.
I know. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the August twenty-fifth Board of Directors meeting for the Coast to Mesa Sanitary District. Go off the rise and join with me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, would you give us some words of wisdom this evening?
Dear God, help us do proper deliberations on all the very important matters in front of us and send a special prayer for the angels.
And Jim Warner, one of the former directors.
Yeah.
What's up with Jim Warner?
Pass the way.
Are you kidding? Yeah. Okay. Got a stroke. Madam Clerk, your own call, please.
Director James Fairman.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Rudin.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry is excused from this meeting. I'm President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Ceremony matters, presentation?
Mr. President.
We're not gonna wish Sean Connery a happy birthday today. Eighty-six years old today. James Mont or Davy Sixt. Double oh-ten. Any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
And we'll move to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak? I have my cards, so we'll move to the consent calendar. We have a request to pull item number two. So we'll pull item number two. Anything else on the consent calendar? Pull.
Moving to consent calendar, only moving item number two.
Thank you. Motion of second. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries four to zero with one absent. Item two, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we had a minor clarification on the report out from closed session, and that has been changed and is included in a minutes report for you.
Any questions to that?
I'll move this. You may do.
Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous with one absent. No public hearings this evening, but Scott will go ahead and do a report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this item is regarding project number three seventeen, which is the President Pump Station Force Main Rehabilitation. As you know, engineer Rob Hamers gave a proposal to the board what it would take to rehabilitate the five pump stations that were once planned for abandonment, and he came up that that cost about six million dollars. The board directed staff at the point of making decisions on rebuilding those stations that they want OCSD to officially cancel the project, the Coast to Mesa Trunk project, and they also directed me to meet with their general manager to see if we can get reimbursements for costs that had incurred. So I did meet with Jim Hamburg at the Orange County sanitation district general manager. We had some good meetings, and as a result, they placed on their board agenda last night an item that would recommend canceling their project, their Southwest Coast to Mesa Trunk project, and then they also authorized payments to CMC for one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. And that one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars was for mostly engineering professional services costs that we incurred in the last ten years. I know we were also seeking to get some money for the pipe that we placed over there by Platte Park in the main, but in their staff report, they did not agree with that because one, there was no agreement between us, and they ultimately said it was worth the County Sanitation District number six. So with that, my recommendation is now that the project is officially closed. We did receive reimbursements from OCSD. My recommendation is that we...
We did, or they recommended?
No, they approved it last night.
We approved it. That's a tremendous result.
Yeah.
Tremendous result.
Yeah. So my recommendation is to proceed with President Pump Station first of the five stations. We did meet with the wastewater crew, and we said, of those five stations, which one needs a priority? They all said President. And we said, do the force main first, follow by the pump station. And so our recommendation is to appropriate the one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars that was approved by OCSD last night, along with transferring one million four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars from project one oh-one to project three seventeen, which is the President Pump Station Force Main Rehab project. And then later, and then direct staff to request additional appropriation of one point five million dollars at a time the construction contract is submitted for approval to the board. At this time, if you approve staff's recommendations, we can at least keep the designs going at that point.
What's the total budget for that President?
Three point two million.
If I may too, the agenda report does show the recommendation is three point two. That's what staff was originally asking. But finance was asked to appropriate what we've already budgeted in one oh-one and the ninety, one ninety-two. And then I'm, we'll be coming back to the board in a month or two with the carryovers from the prior year, so I'd like to start, you know, like I'd like to ship that money there, and then when you actually have a solid cost on the contract, then approve the remaining budget.
Yeah.
So kind of just...
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Other questions for staff, then?
Move for approval of the project as presented by our manager.
Thank you. Motion of second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That motion carries four to zero with one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Good to be here. Yeah.
That's just...
No, no, it's just from...
Can I make one first?
Absolutely.
Rob, do you have a schedule?
No. We are, I haven't got there yet.
So now you have, now with it to go, you can...
Right. We're winding up a few other projects right now. We're almost, we're at the bid. We actually have bid opening next week on one project, and then we have one more to go at the bid, and then everything will be done except for this project. So just trying to keep things in order, that's all.
Is the force main a replacement for lining?
We're trying to, this is a very good question. As much as we'd like to line it, if you line it, we have to bypass the line while you install the liner.
That's mild.
Right. And it is over half mile long. One policy that we've thrown around at staff level is the dual force main policy that OCSD has, and if you build a new force main, you can build it without having to bypass until the very end, when you tie in both ends. And if you build a new force main, then you can come back at your leisure without being under the gun to bypass, then run a camera and the electronic inspection, and then decide whether you want to line it or if it's worth saving and making it into a true parallel or secondary line. So that's kind of our attitude going forward.
Any questions?
One. Do you think maybe at our study session next time, could you be able to kind of give a presentation of how you're gonna be doing on it?
Sure. Actually, if it'd be possible, let's see. We're talking about, okay, next study session? Sure.
Next study, or is it...
Is that enough time?
Actually, maybe not. I'd like to follow in September.
Okay, okay, yeah, 'cause I'm not trying to push it. I just wonder.
Okay, so the next one's September, so October?
Good.
October study session.
Great.
We can get some nice pictures of that.
Good, thank you.
I'm twelve minutes, Scott. Community outreach survey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the last time we did a community survey was in two thousand, was in two thousand twelve, where we surveyed a thousand residents, and we hired consultants to do that work. We, that survey in two thousand twelve was really just geared on getting feedback on the solid waste division. Recommendation now is to really do it all inclusive, the entire organization. And so back in November two thousand fifteen, staff presented to you, talked about the study and what we need to do, and the board decided that we wanted to wait for further implementation of our gas recycling program, because we thought there would be some key questions.
Why aren't you bad? You're right. Many donations...
We're ready.
That's the sansay fight song for information.
Really?
Sounds a lot like the USC song.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So we, the board decided to, because we wanted to further implement the organic recycling program, we thought there was some worded questions we want to ask residents about how they feel about the program, so we, the board felt a survey in the fall to be more appropriate. So tonight, what I'm recommending is just to give us the green light to solicit bids. We will go out and solicit bids, and then once we award a contract, and the contract, once we award a consultant, the consultant's on board, we'll schedule a special meeting, and then we can talk about the type of questions you want to ask. And we can have that dialogue, you know, so we can have some public comments on what kind of questions you want to ask.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at here?
Well, beginning of the green light today, we can start, we can start working on the RFP, get down in a couple of weeks. I'm looking, possibly in October, we can have a special meeting, and then... All, really, the study probably won't occur after the elections. And they might be able to, if their intention is to get it done before the election, we can try that.
With everything considered, I think before the election, if possible, would be a good idea.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing. We can get, if you want the results before the election. Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe the universe of respondents don't have to be quite as big. A thousand is a lot.
That's true. We can definitely cut it down. You know, I think the last time our consultant said, you know...
Five hundred is real.
Three hundred fifty was hard to find, but, you know, we wanted a thousand. We always say a thousand because we, you know, how can we refute the results of a survey when you have a thousand residents? But we can do five hundred, seven fifty. We can get a couple of cost reports and see what it was like.
If it was extra, right?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. We did budget thirty thousand dollars for this, that's in the budget. Okay, so my understanding is, yeah, get the results before the election, so, okay.
Motion through. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. All right, move to item thirteen. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting in that we're busy. A lot of projects going on, and grade five repairs are doing very well. We're going, grade four was, did open yesterday, very, very aggressive bidding, and we're going out for phase five on Monday, so we are trying to keep up with the TV that's being done. I think we're making a killing by avoiding plans and specs and just putting out the videos, and contractors are on top of it. We're doing great, so we're very excited about that, and all the rest of the projects are coming along as well.
Um, you're, you're, how many phases? Do you have any system of a hundred phases or these?
Well...
Is this the first, is this one half of the system being cleaned this year, and then one half next year?
Yes.
I mean, TVs?
Right. So here we are. Let's just say that, let's say that maybe five phases in seven months, and each one's about thirty, so there's the math. But you'd never know what might come in the future either.
So it's a hundred and fifty, that's what, one hundred and fifty in one half of the system?
But what's good is we're right on top of it. And from a standpoint of getting to the work, they need to be repaired immediately, and we're doing that, so that's the best part.
Well, I can, I can feel art, you know, backing the comment. It speaks telepathically, connecting to...
Great prices, too.
You know, as we're doing the lines and as we're TV, CCTV, it's the drought having an impact on what you guys are seeing down there. Do you think there's been less need to clean or, is there any correlation between the drought and the work?
Lot of question, very good. Questionnaire came out about that, and a lot of people think, yes, it's probably true that roots are a little more aggressive when there's less water. And less water means less flushing effect in the sewers, so it does have a little effect.
There's plenty of, I'll talk about this later, but I put in Cambria last week, tour to make Cambria community services district, and they were really showing us, you know, Cambria, you know, it was in there, it melted the pine trees all over the place. I think that more than a third of those trees is dead. And with that fire that was burned in last week up towards First Castle, if that had come a little, you know, another fifteen, twenty miles, city of Cambria would have gone up. So that just made me think about with the trees.
Right.
Okay, I had a fourteen then, what?
Fourteen. We have two small consorts of interest reports. Twenty-one ninety-one Mesa Drive will be the demolition of an existing house and construction of a new house. At this point, it's only been retained to do the survey. Three oh-one-one Salon Road is demolition of a house and construction of a new house. So far, have prepared sewer and water for it, which will be checked by our alternate district engineers. Both sites have existing sewer line to do down, so there's not a lot to go wrong there. That's all.
Any questions? Rob? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Martin, anything for the treasurer's report?
No items this evening.
Do you have any money? Don't answer. Counselor, your report.
Actually, I have a few things to say, since usually I have nothing to say. Saved them all up for a slow meeting, I guess.
We appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your indulgence. So I sent you all a memo about the Culver City case, which is a very helpful case under the Brown Act, because it validates the exception of the Brown Act, and it talks about a situation that happened in Culver City, and the court said it was well within the exception. And the exception, as you know, is when you can respond to things that are not on the agenda. And it might bear, just going over it briefly, so we have it fresh in our mind, that you can briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the public. On your own initiative or on your responsive members of the public, you can ask for clarification, make brief announcements, or make a brief report on your own activities. Or you can, subject to the rules of your procedural body, provide a reference to staff, meaning, you know, see the manager after the meeting, or other resources for information, like refer to our CIP, or request staff to report back at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter, or direct that another matter be placed on a future agenda. So it went over those, reaffirmed that those were proper discussions, and that was very helpful to have a case that said it was okay to do that. With that as a preface, I can talk about a couple of matters that we have going right now. On our writ for against Mesa, we'll probably get that on file tomorrow or Monday, well within the ten day period, and then we'll set it for, the court will set it for a briefing schedule, so we'll have more information clear after that. We're well on schedule to get that on file. And the president's gonna, by the way, the president's gonna be our petitioner in the matter, because we have to have a taxpayer, so he's both a taxpayer, a resident, and president of this board, so he has the best standing for the altar in the action.
I think my heart, I just sort of had a little flutter in my heart going...
Hope it was a good flutter.
Kind of writing in my...
We have a, as you know, we have a Public Records Act request also to Mesa, and we've gotten two or, I guess we've gotten three letters from them, or three responses, and the first was they needed ten days to respond, then they invoked fourteen days to respond further, that they claimed they had under the statute, and then the last communication we had from them said they needed another month. And the law is really that you're supposed to write a prompt response. Sometimes you're gonna have an issue where you need further time to analyze something, and it might be appropriate, like it was with the emails, going through emails. That's maybe legitimate. So as you know, we've sent a follow-up letter saying that's fine for those matters, but for the matters that are readily assurable and common public documents, let's see your contracts, your resolutions, and those kinds of reports, and we'll be down there at your door Monday to pick them up. And if they say nobody's here, or we have nothing for you, we're gonna be back to ask the board for more authority to pursue that in spirit court. Because if we do not accommodate, then I'm gonna suspect there's still...
Well, don't you think?
Yeah. I was understating something, no. So that's it under those matters. I'll have a little more to say under litigation.
Yep, I get my end of my case.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I actually have a real agenda as a matter. Yeah, this is a request for the money for the administrative record. We need to get, pay the administrative record so we can get that record to, that's what the policy is based on, is the record and record is testimony in the record. And we are asking for your authority to do that, just out of, I think we just want to keep you in the loop, and pretty obviously you want us to get the administrative record since you spent more than that amount of money pursuing this with...
I would move the action.
Permission? I just, it's interesting, I found it really interesting that the most expensive person did the most work, had the most value. We've talked about that.
Yeah.
She an attorney?
No.
Big fee, it's on you.
Yeah, yeah.
What if she say keep dragging her feet on that request?
Mesa? You get a writ of mandate, and if you prevail, you get your attorney's fees. If they prevail, they don't get their attorney's.
So that's what you'll be doing, that's your fee.
That's what I'll be asking you for, and Monday does not go well.
We're off track there. We have a motion and a second on the thing of the administrative process for San Ana Water Reuse and Quaudey Board. Hear the discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four to zero with one absent.
And I, Mr. President, I assume that means I can gift a hard copy to it for the electoral. I appreciate it. A lot easier to work.
This is what we, this was our testimony?
Court reporters, which we took down, all the documents, both sides put in the record, the whole thing. And if we prevail, we get that money back. And if we don't, we don't.
Okay, let's go to local meetings again.
West County Sand District, we got a meeting last night, and we did approve the settlement with our Coast to Mesa Sanitary District, so that's down the road.
Great results.
Yep. As good as we're gonna get.
It's three hundred.
Yeah. We also, in closed session, approved five hundred, no, no, it was...
Oh, you reported it out?
Yeah, we...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Looking after the other guy's client.
We're in agreement with them and that, but it was a house in the orange, and they got flooded. I mean, when I say flooded, it was like on Thanksgiving or something, and it blew it all up.
Round flood?
Flooded right through the house. Five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I think is what we settled it for, but it's a, I mean, it's like a two million dollar house.
What's an SSO or a backup?
Well, I think it was a backup, and we did some investigation to see if they had an anti-siphon or, you know...
Backflow.
Backflow device requirement, but it's county, or it's county, or it's out there. It never did get documented, so we, they had us, you know, we couldn't use that to get out of it. Anyway, so that's...
It's not covered by insurance, is it?
No, it isn't.
Unless you get that option, I mean, it's an option.
Yeah.
Insurance won't cover it back if it's a...
What else? Well, I think that's about it.
Well, one of my employees, I'm thirty years old.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He has a lot of roots in things, you know, financial, extensive financial resources and banks and things. Most of his people are on the construction.
Well, that's about it.
Anything for consulting? We didn't meet, something... Izdoc? I'll just report that major item discussion our last meeting, other than trying to get our first vice president to get us the program, which he has a little difficult to be doing, but we'll have a new first vice president next week. Elections, we, election, the ballots will be out sometime late September, mid to late September, we'll be receiving it. It's a contested election for the president, first and second, and third vice presidents. Secretary and treasurer are running out of votes. So you'll be seeing letters like you saw here from viable candidates, and I had a question on those letters, because obviously I'm running for president, as I can, my letter's gonna go out next week. Can we use the district's letterhead to campaign like that?
Yeah, it's because it's on the district behalf, you're representing the district.
Okay.
So it's not like a general election, it is...
Okay, so both of us can prepare our statements and give them to you guys for...
Sure.
Okay. And I'll have it to you early next week. One of the big things, we always talk about it, Izdoc is our membership in OCOG. Of course, Phil Anthony is very adamant that we need to be, and, you know, the majority, our budget at Izdoc over the years is about eight thousand dollars, roughly ten thousand dollars. Five thousand, that goes to OCOG. And we have a couple of people on the board and a couple of members that come on attending just absolutely do not want to be part of OCOG, because they have to waste somebody.
You know, I'm on the OCOG board.
Yeah, I know you are. And I'm, I'm supposed to be one of the liaisons from Izdoc, and I forgot that there was a meeting this morning, so I didn't go. But I'll, we'll report for him, but he's just...
Can I say one thing on that? I went to the OCOG meeting today, and the county just pulled out of OCOG.
Yeah. Is they really?
Yeah.
Really?
Seventy-nine thousand bucks.
Oh, my God.
That's gonna signal the end of OCOG, I think.
Wow.
Or that's gonna put a damper on the activity of OCOG.
It isn't doing as much good.
Well, the big deal is the Center for Demographic Research that OCOG uses out of Cal State Fullerton, yeah. And wow.
Oh, my God.
That's a big move.
So what happens to Izdoc if they're in for check? Will they pay it off?
Well, everybody else is in there, and we're still operating.
We just paid our dues yesterday.
Yeah. Wow. And they just have a new membership, too.
Try to keep them around a while, but...
They're mad at you.
They only have one staff, and she's part of them. Should be more part of them. Now, it's a hundred and twenty-nine, twenty thousand apart by. They can get it up and down early.
CSDA, five hundred, you can report.
Yeah. We just finished having a resolution here in the, in the God Street, and everything was well, except that the Little Hoover Commission needs to be, you haven't heard anything?
No, because they changed rooms, so they couldn't, they couldn't put it on video.
They put it on the...
They were meeting this afternoon, weren't they?
Yeah, but they changed, they were gonna livestream it, then they, then they delayed livestream for some reason, then they changed rooms, now then they couldn't videotape that, so...
So, but we're, we're actually very well represented, because Kyle and Neil both have woven over everything, and so, you know, we're going to be talking on this topic. Big things consolidation.
Makes it work, doesn't it?
Do you think so? Do you, or do we?
They have a bigger budget for traveling.
Yeah. So anyway, we're gonna see, you know, what happens out of that. It's just a meeting where they're trying to decide, they've already chosen their witnesses, but they're only allowing a doc, and fortunately, CSU has two, for sure. And we'll see what happens out of that. I have loads of material on, a little thing that I feel, what happens... appeal, and what happened, I think they're not, some of ninety-nine, stuff that I had when the Little Hoover exists again, compared to what we're gonna go through now. And, so we'll see what happens on that part, and Joe.
Who's, I'm sorry, who's said some of the Hoover Commission?
There's a whole group, I have to.
Are they legislators, or are they private people, or?
They're, they're a combination of people, you know.
Kind of like a grand jury.
Well, you know, that's what I might, I would think, Jen, kind of like a grand jury type of, or a Lafco type group.
The ninety, oh, the ninety-nine, it's different. I don't know, I can't, it is a combination of people, so it's all on that, and.
And they have staff.
Yeah, not much. And they're, they're, they're properly, they're interested also in the reserves, who has reserves, what they're using them for, and how they're learning.
Safety fueling.
Yes, so, you know, we'll see what happens on this one. So far, they haven't been asked of anybody, they're just, one of us going through, this is their first time, and so we'll see from this one what's going on. And I'm sure, if you wanna go on the website, see for CSDA, you go to, you can quote them there. And, and, and we have elections, I'm sorry, my voice is a bathroom affair, so, we had elections from different districts, who was running, and who got elected, and Joe Mottin, who made it, for more than a, I'm opposed, which is good. I said I'll never have an imposed, unreal, so, and Greg, who, I cared what happened with the presidential CSDA, he made, I think, so it was good. And aside from that, I'm going up, next Thursday, if I'm able to avoid me, you know, I have to look at my picture, because I'm in that room.
Are you using the SDR Mayborn?
Yeah, wherever needed.
Just tell them to put a cover on them.
How big is that portrait?
Too big.
Not as big as David Aranda.
So, aside from that, the other thing, of course, we're pushing, going to the.
It's called the annual conference.
Annual conference, which is exciting. I'm sure you all have papers on that already, so, you know, do you? And we have, we have all our CFPs, okay, so.
Sandy.
It's in Sandy Resort, it's a shared thing, Marina Hotel, and it's been a good conference this past, you know, so many good speakers are in it. And SDR May is, you know, the usual, which is a nice breakfast and a speaker, and of course, the speaker's name is, I have to say, last name is Shaker. I wrote that with friends, so different again, than you know, and.
My accent's probably.
Yeah, I didn't hear that. Anyway, aside from that, the board itself is just planning, you know, have a new people that we just elected.
You got two or three new people.
Yeah, so we'll have, you know, and I can't say enough for CSDA, as far as how they're really looking after all the districts, and they're really doing a heck of a good job with the capital, and, and they have a real good group, taking care of everything. I think, I missed one meeting, and because I missed that, I'm going to be in charge of the struggling portions where the premiums to, around, that's why, so, I haven't gotten any from the shoulders.
You got some meetings.
That's what they told me. So, anyway, that's it, so that's it.
SDR May, I'd actually do, last week and the week before, we had our board meeting, and then the following week, at the board meeting, talked about no rate increases, which you guys already know, on the premiums. But then the following week, once, once a year, the SDR Mayborn visits either a, a member district, or, in this case, we actually went to four, five districts, we met in Cambria, visited the Cambria, I'm sorry, the Sansimian Community Services District, the Cambria Community Services District, the Cambria Healthcare District.
Oh, God.
And then we went to the Templeton Community Services District. It's really cool to see, I mean, the Sansimian Community Services District provides water, parks, and sewer treatment.
Wow.
To seventeen hundred people. And we went to their well, one of their wells, then we went down to their treatment, I was telling you, their treatment plant. Their well sits on Hurst property, so we got permission to go into the Hurst ranch a little bit, and you could see where the, and there were all these horses, and, and this is no joke, as we're going in, there were about fifty zebras that came walking down the road, right, right where we were, you know, from the old Hurst Zoo. Their, their sewer treatment, if you're ever, if you ever go up to Hurst Castle, the sewer treatment's just right down on the bluff up to the ocean, I mean, it's right there. And they have these nice condos, right, and, and I don't know who was there first, the sewer treatment plant or the condos, but I bet those condos sell really cheap. At the, in Cambria, the Community Services District, we went to see the famous Cambria desalination facility. And I gotta tell you, if they can do it, anybody can do it. Their, their desalination facility is made with storage containers. They have, you know, storage containers that are on back of trucks.
Yeah.
When they were getting this thing started, there was a company, there was cancellation of an order from some company up north, in the northern part of the, the country, and so Cambria was able to go in and buy this stuff really cheap, or, you know, relatively cheap. But their whole operation is through these storage containers, they have reverse osmosis units in these storage, and they open the doors, you know, and then they had a couple of tanks. Well, they're not desalinating ocean water right now, but they are desalinating brackish water.
Yes.
It's the water that, you know, comes in.
The, the well lowered the groundwater in the oceans coming in.
Yeah, and they were showing this, it was, it was kinda cool to see, the water, when it comes, when it gets treated, by the time it gets to where it's pumped to the public, it has to take sixty days to run from the decel to the distribution point, sixty days.
How many days per day did it?
I don't remember. Yeah, so, and it, it was, they have to put dye in there, and they trucked the dye, and, and the guy was saying, yeah, the last one we did came out of fifty-seven days, they couldn't use it, they had to put it back in the groundwater. So, the, the, and then the, they have a healthcare district in Cambria, but there's no hospital anywhere near Cambria, they either go to Templeton, the Port of San Luis Obispo, to get a hospital. And they have all these ambulances, and it was really good deal. And then in Templeton, the next day, which is across the hill, the big thing in Templeton was their skateboard park, it's a layman's, and it was a really good tour, and like I said, if you ever go into Hurst Castle, don't look at the, I'm sure you'd be fascinated with the sewer treatment facility, it was.
I can tell you a lot about that.
You probably helped a little bit.
The water, the water system lowered the groundwater, and it hit flat, takes it forward, and the seawater comes in, and so they're getting seawater, they're getting salt in their drinking water, so they, they changed out all the plumbing fixtures, and it's a, um, water conservation in a big way, and that's top the, and first one of the seawater, because the, the water you keep going down to the, the mystery.
Okay, if you wanna buy property in Cambria, now's the time to, they're, they're feeling the price.
I've seen the river.
That just blew me away.
That's a beautiful area, it's over there.
Cambria's really nice, you know, but it's as dry as a bomb.
I mean, that's deep, but, you know.
And on Labor Day, they have something called Pinderato, which is Labor Day, it's a line, put on by the.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All six members.
Okay, other meetings, I'm gonna go ahead and give a report on the ad hoc, just an act of, from the ad hoc committee. We, I missed a couple of meetings, and I know Bob missed a couple of meetings, but we've been at the last several meetings with the ad hoc committee and the effort, with the consultants, and Mesa Water. I think it's got, correct me if I'm right, we're making really good progress. We're scheduled with a newsletter.
Special edition newsletter.
Special edition newsletter will be coming out, and of course, we said go with the town hall meeting in October, October, I think. Timey, there's a candidates forum a week earlier, with someone, I had the dates wrong, but, other than that, I mean, we, we seem to be getting a lot of good interaction with the consultants, and with Alan, and Scott, and, and Adam Davis, and Mark.
And they're all married.
We did have an inquiry from a former director, so whether it's related.
Okay.
Anything else to add on the ad hoc study, do you think, do you think, Bob, anything?
No, I think, you know, it's, it's a very important effort, and it's learning experience, but, I don't think, you know, it's a team we have, and it's doing very well.
And kind of to tie with that, I think Scott had mentioned to all of you that one of the consultants from Mesa Water had nominated us, CMSD, to receive a radish award with the Orange County Taxpayers Association, and one of our consultants' boss was able to stop that from happening, and, and again, tied with that, Scott and Bob and I met with Carolyn Kadetschi yesterday afternoon to discuss things, and she had some interesting comments for us, and just to kind of recap her comments, one of the things she said that I thought was the best comment of the day was, if Mesa Water's doing something, they must be up to something. She knows, she said that.
Well, she doesn't know, but she thinks something though.
She says, her first question to us was, what are they gonna get out of this consolidation? I mean, she wanted to know what they were trying to accomplish, and, and we give her opinions, of course. She did ask us a couple of questions from the fact that she was involved with Orange County Taxpayers, and one was, talked about, asked about the building, and Scott did a really nice job of explaining, she was under the impression we still own this building, so that we were really owned, and had two buildings. Scott did a great job of explaining to her all that process, and, the other thing she wanted to know about, I mean, just right up front, she wanted to know about the trash contract, why we haven't gone out to bid, and, her opinion is it doesn't look very good for us to continue to have that trash contract not out to bid, and, and we, we talked to her a little bit about that, but the bottom line with them and the merger is that they are gonna take a hands-off position, they're just gonna, neutral position, they're gonna back off, and just let things.
They'll be watching, but they're not.
They'll be watching it, but they're not gonna be acting.
Carolyn was very shoot, politician, and then the minister.
It was a, I thought it was a good meeting. Okay, other meetings, are there?
Yeah, one other meeting I went to the other night was the reception for the new CEO, I was just chamber coming. After it happened.
Did you?
Yeah.
You been to that one?
No.
Early.
The woman.
Yeah.
Okay, doing that, from San Diego.
Love this call.
Yeah, exactly, enjoying doing that. Anyway, it was worthwhile, I mean, everybody changed out, and.
Did it get said about the mansion?
Very little, so we couldn't have to, and, and, it's very positive.
Well, obviously, I think most of us are disappointed with, and you saw the response letter we sent to their legislative person.
She came, she came on board, she and Tom Johnson came on board after that letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Scott, for the note today about what happened at the candidates forum last night, at the Mesa Verde Candidates Forum, Mesa Verde, a mortgage association forum. The four candidates that actually showed up for the event were John Stevens, Sandy Guinness, Jay Humphrey, and Al Maloney, Lee Ramos, Al Mansour, and Mr. Menziger had other things to do last night, so they didn't show up. And a question was asked about what their opinion was on the merger, and all four of them said that it was a political stunt. Not to paraphrase, to excuse Mr. Mosier, but that they all basically said this is a power grab, and political thing, so, and that came from Jeff West.
I went to the chief, he was there, and they were all out there, and he was very good, pretty godly, you know, too soon, and it was packed, people really cared what was going on.
Interesting, too, the mayor pro temp apparently has a little meeting with a, a person, I mean, a stand-up of Jim, and he meets with someone at City Hall. So he's doing that next month, his, his guest at the stand-up of Jim is Al Mansour, is, you know, people have questioned why one of his guests is a candidate. Okay, any other, any other meetings that any of us attended? Okay, seeing them, that will move to old business, which we have none, new business none, any director comments?
Hmm.
I have just one. We have a liaison meeting scheduled for next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I can tell you the date, I believe it's September tenth.
Would it be wise to post call that?
No.
Do you wanna go to that, you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Who's hosting?
I believe it's at the city, it's the sixteenth, I'm sorry, September sixteenth.
September sixteenth.
Correct.
One, one of the canceled one at Memphis, or?
They did a call in the morning.
Yeah, I didn't know it was part of.
They move right along.
Yeah.
Even if it's canceled, so, it won't be at the city.
I know Vice President Perry won't attend, if he won't go to the city, he's told me he does not like his things at all. I will be in at a, at a joint college of the conference Saturday, so, if you three would like to represent us.
Fifteen to what?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
At eight eight. Can you confirm, you, you have that confirmed?
I, correct.
Now, I'm assuming, or, there is a chance that, as the city in Mesa canceled last time, they may cancel this one as well.
That's your thing.
So, but, as Counselor said, it could be an awkward meeting.
I'm just glad there's a quarter minute.
Might have been a good one. You'll need it.
They like you.
Okay. Sir, I'm not gonna be here.
You know, I was gonna, we were gonna go to Iowa State football, and that may be the only reason we're gonna cancel.
You'll cancel go to, you'll cancel going to.
We play Utah.
Sounds like good all around.
Seventeen, 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 they play Iowa.
No. Scott. Rob, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A staff comment, not sure what the policy is or anything, but.
Utah's the only one for it.
Jim Warner was on the board for sixteen years, might be appropriate to, moment of silence, but you're in a meeting on who's you have.
I, I.
If there's something for him, and perhaps it's gonna.
I, I plan on adjourned the meeting as they have to thank you for.
Yeah, he talked about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other director comments? Okay, then I'm gonna adjourn us to a close session, or?
I'm not sure we need a close session, President, unless any director wants one. I can give a brief report, and you can determine if you want one. We don't have much to report on the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We authorized the record, we'll, I think they'll be filing their answer pretty soon, and we'll have the long one say next time. It'll start heating up next, next month, but.
Do we wanna mention the proposed, the unfortunate policy?
Yeah, I, if you can carry the discussion, I, I only briefly looked at it, but that's, that was pretty interesting to have.
Well, and I mentioned here, weekly update, we, Rob sent this to us, thank you, Rob, and it was actually forwarded to Rob from McKelley, right, and they're, they're, so, apparently our arguments in the public hearing back in July twenty-fourth had, had took notice to state.
And they're, they're, so, apparently our arguments in the public hearing, um, back in July twenty-fourth is, had, uh, took notice to state officials because they are mending their enforcement policies. Um, and a couple of them, they are now defining what a high-volume spill is. They said between a hundred thousand to two million gallons. Um, they're also saying that, you know, one of our big arguments is, is, is that, hey, look, we, we got the test results, the water quality test results, and there was no harmful effects to water. Well, now the policy's gonna say, it does, you don't have to have, um, actual proof that, uh, wastewater can cause harmful effects. Everyone knows wastewater is dangerous, and if the water waste is gonna be harmful. So they're tightening up that enforcement policy because of a lot of our arguments.
Doesn't that give us some leverage? I mean, if, 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 if they're changing it based on what we did, I mean, and it's, that would seem like it would give us a little leverage or something.
Might, but, uh, I can think of a lot of evidentiary rules why we couldn't bring it in, but it would sure be nice to let that come in somehow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it was certainly a, a good, a good thing to hear.
Yeah, Alan once said that our fixes on the station are also not allowed to be used by them to say, after we fixed all these things, after the spills, to say, see, you knew if, you fixed all these things, so, that's the rule he confirmed.
Called subsequent remedial measures. But, um, anyway, well.
Well.
We have some impact.
Once again, it just, once again, it just shows that this special district is in the forefront in leading things in the state of California.
Absolutely.
We are right out in front of everybody.
And I think some of the board's policy, or part of the board's policy, was to not let the regional board get away with not following their own rules. And now, maybe.
We could have rolled over really easily, just accept that it walked away, but it made a lot less.
And everyone does.
And everyone does.
Roll over on them.
Yeah, that was a good.
I mean, we were the first agents to stand up against them.
You've got a bunch of pig-headed directors, you know, which is what it is. Good.
Good job.
Good man.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, there, there's no need.
And the other one is, excuse me, the other one's the, uh, Caltrans, that we did get service on the state. We're really, uh, taking issue with the state, I guess, but this is a small matter, this is our matter with our contractor incorrectly put their hole through our sewer mainline, and we do have service on them now, so we'll get an answer for that. So next, next month, we should have two substantive reports on both cases, on the status of both cases. And that'll give us time to get through the Mesa issues, some of, some of them.
It's, what we're trying to do is recover our costs.
Yes, this is a small case, but, yeah, we're just, and, and it's, as we, I think we've reported to you, it's a little complicated in terms of the city handed, uh, handed over ownership, uh, the state to the city, uh, they passed the baton at the same time this was being done, and, uh, we, we got a few things to sort out. So we're basically saying, somebody did it, which way you guys pay it?
Alan, did we ever hear back from Discovery for the state?
No, we have not yet. Yeah, we'll follow up on that.
All right, if there's no further business, then I'm gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We did hear back, it was a very skimpy response, though. So, yeah. It was basically, they, they provided us a document saying that the property transferred, and that, that's all they gave us. So we'll, now that we're in the litigation process, we have more formalized methods of getting answers, interrogatory some things. We'll try and keep it in mind that this is a small case, I believe, so we're up to date going next week.
All right, then if, if there is nothing else, I'm gonna adjourn us, but before we adjourn, just a, a moment of silence and remembrance of Jim Warner. Um, we all have, we all have recollections, we all have personal memories of Jim Warner, except for the newer staff. Jim was really a good guy. I mean, I don't know, he, he was a mentor to me in a lot of ways, and I know he was to Jim and to Arlene and, um.
He trained to be to me.
He trained to be to Bob, but I used the word pig-headed a minute ago, and, and I'm sure Bob, being from Iowa, would, would relate that. But, but, uh, Jim Warner, uh, brought a lot of us into the fold with a lot of things, and, uh, he will be missed. I know Beverly's devastated and his wife, but we can just take a, a quick moment of silence in memory of former board member, former board president, Jim Warner. Thank you all very much.
A, a real quick story, please.
Please, Rob, you worked with him more than anybody, please.
He was great, uh, besides having the, the record of quickest meeting of eighteen minutes by a full.
I was, I was shooting for a record tonight, but it didn't work.
A full board meeting of eighteen minutes. He would admonish the directors for getting into too much discussion, saying that they were supposed to have figured all this out before the meeting, and that you just come in and vote and go home. That was, that was the way he ran with the gavel.
Well, you know, when I was, back when I was on the board before, and we met in that little conference room behind the council chambers, and you're right, if, if, if you had more to talk about, he'd look at you and say, you should have been ready with that, you should have had that already done.
We could be a press release, from the, we can get some recognition for it.
Would you, would you put that?
That'd be a really.
That'd be outstanding, Scott.
Sure.
We might, we might also consider doing a resolution honoring.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, great, thank, thank you all for that. Okay, with that, I will adjourn us to our September twenty-second meeting. Happy Labor Day to everybody, and, uh, we're adjourned.
Scott, somewhere there's a proclamation that was written for him that would have all of his.
Yeah.